We'll begin this evening with a series of public ordinances. We'll begin with ordinance O-Dash 20-Dash-11, an ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach amending the annual budget for the general fund of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1, 19 to June 30, 20, to reconcile expenses and income and ratify over expenditures. Is there any public comment on this ordinance at this time? Hearing none, I'll move forward on to ordinance-O-Dash-20-Dash-12, the ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach amending the annual budget for the Water Reclamation Treatment Plant Fund of the Town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1, 19 to June 30 of 20, to reconcile expenses and income and ratify over expenditures. Is there any public comment at this time? Hearing none, I'll go to ordinance-O-Dash-20-Dash-13, an ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach amending the annual budget for the Utility Fund of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of 19 to June 30 of 2020, to reconcile expenses and income and ratify over expenditures. Any public comment at this time? Now I'll move to the last one, ordinance-O-Dash-20-Dash-14, the ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach amending the annual budget for the Water Park Fund of the Town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1, 19 to June 30 of 2020, to reconcile expenses and income and ratify expenditures. Any public comment at this time? Hearing none, is there a motion to close the public hearings?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, we can all go take a break until for eight minutes or so until seven o'clock. Okay. Hi, everybody, we'll begin the January 21st Town Council meeting. If your representatives believe that the entire council is present, if you will, we'll begin the meeting with the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
The United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Some of us are working with two devices here. Give me one second. One more second here. At this time, I'm going to ask that we take a moment of silence for Senate President Emeritus Thank you very much. Is there a move to approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. At this time in the meeting, is there any public comment from any item on the agenda? Hearing none, I do want to share with everybody that our new Senator Michael Jackson is going to try to call in. I believe he wants to speak to the resolution. He's in duties right now with the preparing for the alignment state of Senator Miller. So if he can break away from that, he'll call in. Thank you. Approval of the minutes for the December 17th Town Council meeting?
Approve, move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Approval of the minutes of the January 11th Town Council work session?
So moved.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Approval of the minutes for the January 11th closed session?
Move to approve. Second.
Is there? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I have it. That's what good to the town administrator's report. I believe Holly has a screen she wants to pull up for us to see, so I'll let Holly do that.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I just have two updates. The Town Hall HVAC upgrade RFP was released today. It is available on eMaryland Marketplace. Also, information is available on this RFP on the town website. There's a mandatory pre-bid meeting being held on February 4th at Town Hall, and all that information is available on our website and will be in the papers as well. One update that we wanted to provide is on the electronic vehicle charging stations. The construction has been complete and final electrical connections are planned within the next two weeks, so just wanted to make sure public and councils aware that those are ready to go.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Holly. I appreciate that. That's an exciting time again in Chesapeake Beach. Does the council have any questions of the town administrator? I'll start with Dr. Bodine.
I do not have any questions. Valerie, did Valerie ask hers? I'm sorry, I didn't hear her.
No, I didn't have any.
Okay, I do not have any questions either, sorry.
Thank you, Larry.
No questions, thank you.
Greg?
Yes, a couple of questions. One is a request for a future update regarding the chemicals that were uninstalled at the water reclamation plant. The other one was, I had poked around the Maryland Marketplace earlier this evening looking at the, wanted to just check out the RFP for the HVAC upgrades, and I didn't see any bid information there. That could be operator error. I just wanted to mention that. That's all, thanks.
Thank you, Stephen. Keith?
Hey, thank you, Mayor. No specific questions, just want to say those electric vehicle charging stations look really nice and I can't wait for their operation, so thank you.
Yes, indeed. And vice president?
I have just one question regarding the short-term model survey. Is there an end date or a cutoff date to that and maybe before the January 27th meeting? And then will we be able, as well as the planning and zoning folks, be able to see the results of those surveys compiled before that meeting?
We're working on compiling that data and will provide a response.
Right, so it's still open right now, but?
It is actually closed as of today.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Well, you know, public works as a report. We've seen Jay's report. I don't know that Jay's on the call, but if we have any questions, Holly can make note of those.
Question?
I am here, Mayor, I just can't get my audio working, but I can see and hear everybody.
Okay, very good. Let me start with Derek and work our way around. Thanks, Jay.
Sure. Nothing for Jay.
Keith?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jay, good evening. Related to the recently formed Kellums Committee, and there's no rush on any of this, but I'm, we're going to be outreach and looking for any available data and information related to the facilities in the grounds over there. And I was just wondering if there were any as-built, anything, you know, I've got a construction background, that's one of the first things I always ask about. Anything that's buried in the ground that you might have record of, just stuff for future consideration, that's all. And again-
Sure, sure, I can share what we have.
Yeah, again, there's no rush on that, in the upcoming months is fine. I just wanted to kind of mention to you. My other, I had a question regarding the water park. Could you elaborate briefly on the leak that you all had suffered there, please?
Sure. We realized after air testing and filling the pool, which sometimes happens, we had a return sized all the way down to an inch and a half break during the season. So it's one out of about 60. We just valved it off, got the season through, and knew once we got a few other things fixed with the weather we needed, we would focus on that. So we're able to find it, and we've already fixed one, we're going to fix the next one next.
Thanks.
Thank you, Derek. Larry?
Yeah, Jay, and I don't know if this is to Jay and/or Holly, just a question, have we heard anything from State Highway about repairs to the fencing along 261 there just to the north of the fire department?
I know we've reached out to them, I'll let Holly speak to that.
I do not have an update, Larry, but I will follow up.
Yeah, I think it would be good to follow up with them. It's really, it's been, what, now a couple of months? It'd be nice to get that fixed. Thank you.
All right, Charlie?
Yeah, I was going to ask about that as well. I kind of wouldn't mind if it's not too much trouble if it was maybe a bullet item on this report until it is, till we at least know that it's in progress or scheduled. The other question I had, Jay, was I'm a little curious, it's sort of that time for that annual announcement to folks that cold weather's coming, it's been pretty mild so far, and be sure you're taking care of your pipes. I was going to ask maybe if Holly would put that in one of the mailouts, you know, the email newsletter that goes out, because it does look like we might get a little bit of chilly weather over the next couple of weeks. But I'm curious, Jay, you noted you already had a call for frozen pipes and it's barely been below 30, 35 degrees.
Yeah, and that was, that was almost three weeks ago now. We had a cold snap, we actually had a few nights in 28, 27, and someone's outdoor hose bib frozen broke, we got called in for it. So, yeah, and you're correct, next week looks like it's going to be that time of year, so I'm sure we can add that to the E blast.
Thank you.
And Valerie?
No, my question's been asked.
Thank you. Next, we have the Water Reclamation Treatment Plant Report. We read John's report. If we have any questions, I'll start with Valerie and work my way around.
No questions.
Thank you. Charlie?
There's nothing I could ask that Larry won't ask better.
Exactly my sentence. Larry?
All right, given that lead-in, I will ask a question. The biotoxicity, toxic chemical testing, I see it was done during the week of January 11th and 14th, do we have any results?
Not yet, Larry, but we're expecting to have some probably by next week.
And a question I've asked before in the past, I know we see a report on some of the RFPs coming out, but one that I did not see in there was the work to install covers over the filters.
I talked to Wayne the other day, well, actually it was today, but we should be working, he should have that RFP for us pretty soon here.
And just a suggestion, speaking now as Chair of the Climate Change Advisory Group, we might want to look into seeing if we could put solar panels on top of those covers?
Yeah, definitely, we can look into that.
Thank you, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Greg?
Yeah, my only, I didn't have a question, I had just a request I addressed to the administrator earlier, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Keith?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One, Larry already asked, I was curious when the results would be expected. The other thing I was just curious about regarding the biotoxicity and toxic chemical testing was, have we ever failed that in recent history, let's say the last five or 10 years?
Not yet, knock on wood. Last year was a difficult year. We did fail the bio-monitoring part, the biology part of it, failed one aspect of the two-part test, and we took it again, the same, the same next week after we failed it, and we passed that part of it.
Oh, okay.
That was the only time we had actually failed one of the acute tests, chronic test.
And what, so was that just a matter of what was flowing through the plant at the time since it passed, or were there changes made, or do you have?
Well, that's, the reason of the test is to see if there is any toxicity that kills the, both the acute tests is for larvae of different shellfish and fish, and the chronic is of minnows and different types of fish in that form. We failed the acute part of it, and that could be just, just something that they didn't like in the water. Hermit states we can, we have one shot at taking the test, we have 30 days to take that test over again. If we failed that one, then we have to do a lot of work in finding what the toxicity that caused the failure of it.
I see, okay.
And that gets a little more involved.
All right, well, thank you for that explanation. The other question I had was, I see down below this shellfish protection tank was used three times during this reporting period. And so as Heritage starts to come online and we start talking about the Highlands potentially coming online, what does that mean in terms of overflow when we get these heavy rain events? Will that additional flow from these other houses, I mean, is there enough room for volume in the shellfish protection tank to accommodate that, or is that not really a concern because the flow will still be well within parameters? I'm just curious how that works as we get more and more flow when we have a heavy rain event.
The way that the new norm now is, we used to get an inch of rain, that was something we handled, but nowadays we're getting one, three days in a row, or we get two to three inches in four hours. It creates a little more stress on the plant. The flow that should be coming from Highlands, it's not going to be a substantial amount, and it's probably less than what it takes to run water through the press for, so we should be okay, it's just the quick hitters on the rain that really causes problems.
Okay, so that's what, I was just kind of curious if there would be an additional overflow volume, you know, needed or another tank or something, you know, let's say all of Heritage is, not, yeah, Heritage is online, all however many hundred houses, and then we get a three-inch rain, you know, two or three days in a row, or three or four inches spread over two or three days, would we still be able to handle the flow, is kind of my question? And just something to think about, I don't know if you, I don't expect you to have the answer down pat right now, but I'm just, you know, curious if that is something that has been thought about or planned for or needs to be.
Well, I'm hoping that everything should be our parameters there. We have those uses of the shellfish tank for that, it wasn't really for to, I guess, allow for, you know, for excess flow coming in, it was just to, we put so many feet in it to take the surge off the plant. Still had to use it to just balance out the flows.
Right.
Now, we had the most rainfall a little while back, we had seven inches in about two or three days, and we handled that okay, but the extra flow, we won't, we shouldn't see a lot that, you know, we're always going to have trouble with rain down there.
Yeah, yeah.
We have a surge tank that can hold 1.5 million, which the plant can do, and we have large clarifiers there.
Okay.
So we have a lot of volume we can use.
All right, all right, well, thank you very much. Good to hear.
Thank you. Mr. Vice President?
No questions, thank you.
All righty, next we'll move on to the Dakota Forest Report. We've seen comments before, do we have any questions? If there are any, I'll start with you, Derek, and work our way around.
None for me, thanks.
Keith?
No questions, thank you, Mayor.
Greg?
No questions, thank you.
Larry?
What's a question, just a comment I make several times is the, on the open reports, the longstanding ones, the cases were opened in May of 2018, October of 2018, they're still open, any updates? Connie, you're on.
I know, I was on mute. I checked into those, and those are foreclosures, nothing has changed, as you probably know, due to COVID, foreclosures are kind of dormant right now, nothing, nobody's doing anything with them, so we're probably going to have them around for a while.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Stephen. Charlie?
No questions.
Dr. Bodine?
Yes, I just, Connie, I was going to ask you tonight, how's the long-term rental inspection program going? It's relatively new for our duty task.
I heard how is the long-term rental inspection going? I missed the last two or three words there.
No, it's just a relatively new program, so I thought, you know, we should get time to ask how it was going.
Honestly, be, taking into consideration the COVID protocol that we have been enduring over the last almost year now, I think it's going relatively well. We are inspecting between 20 and 25 houses a month, and just interestingly enough, I would say about 80 to 85% of them are coming back with absolutely no deficiencies, and the few that have deficiencies, I have not had one case shed of anything that was serious. I think it's a good program, and I'm happy we're doing it, and I think it's going as well as can be expected. It's going to take a while, as we all knew, but we're slowly bringing them online. It's going to take a while, as we all knew, but we're slowly bringing them online.
Thank you, Connie. We have no town engineers report. Town engineers report, is Wayne on the call?
Yes.
Okay, very well, I guess, starting with with Valerie, we'll take any questions away if we have any.
Oh, hi, Wayne. Yes, just your new update, other than what's in your report on dredge?
There has not. There's supposedly a call coming in February for us to coordinate that with the Corps, but we've not heard anything about that yet.
Okay, just to reiterate, I'm interested in, you know, follow up on possible redesigning of the derrys if it's uncut. That's all I had, thank you.
Charlie?
No, I don't have anything.
Larry?
Yes, on the 261 sidewalks, your note said was in the process of coordinating a meeting on January 7th. I was wondering if any updates?
We received an email from SHA on the 12th saying she's still trying to schedule.
Thank you.
Greg?
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I was going to ask that same question about the moving along the 261 sidewalks. Wayne, under the Kellums Field, I see that there's an action item. You're creating a grading and sediment control plan for the removal of excess material in the DMP site for use on the field. Could you elaborate briefly on on that?
Sure. We have surveyed the area of the excess material at the DMP dredge material placement site to determine how much material is there. We have taken soil samples of the material to determine what the material is made of and make sure it's safe to be reused on the field. Completed a grading plan of what that would look like on the field. At this point, we're kind of waiting for to see where we are with funding. We've also submitted a DMP grant request to remove that excess material either on to the on to the field or elsewhere, wherever we can dispose of.
Okay, I'm back to the sidewalk real quick. I just, next time you speak to State Highway, you know, you can let them know that you're feeling a lot of questions maybe from council if on this end. Thanks.
Will do.
Thank you. Keith?
No additional questions, thank you.
Derek?
Yes, I've got two and you know I would ask about the sidewalk. So my question, the the name you have in the report, which acronym does she belong to? MGI, BAI, or SHA?
I'm sorry, the name in the report for the 261 sidewalk?
Brittany Jackson?
Brittany Jackson is the SHA representative.
Okay. And my other question regarding the Wesley Stenett Water Study, there's a note that there's a draft of the grant application to be filed before the deadline of the 31st. Not getting into details, but based on our conversation last week in the works, in the work session, is that still moving or is that going to be on pause?
That is moving forward as planned.
Okay. All right, that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, Derek. Deputies report, is there anybody from the Sheriff's Office on the call?
Yes, Mayor, it's Lieutenant Hollinger.
Hi, Lieutenant. Okay, if we have any questions of the lieutenant, I'll I'll start with Derek.
No questions, thank you.
Keith?
Yeah, I have a question, not about what's on the report, but so for the opioid abuse awareness committee, Detective Ricky Cress used to be representative from the Sheriff's Unit on on that committee. He has stepped away and I just wanted to ask if you could see if you had any of your officers who would want to serve on that. We meet, I don't know, somewhere between once a month to once a quarter. And, you know, really, we like to get, you know, input from the Sheriff's Office when we can. I know there is a weekly report that's put out as well, but it's always nice to get, you know, local information and of course, ideas from from the officers as well. But if if we could talk maybe more offline or if you could recommend somebody, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you've got it, Councilman. I actually spoke with Deputy Cress about that today and we're already moving forward on that. So we're going to put the word out and and we'll reach out to you over the next week and I'm sure we can get somebody to, you know, take the torch and run with it.
That'd be great, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
That's wonderful. Thank you, Lieutenant. Greg?
No questions, just a broad heartfelt thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you, it's an honor, yes.
Larry?
No questions and again, thank you for all your service.
Thank you, sir.
Charlie?
I was just struck by the significant increase in the number of calls and I'm wondering if that's a typical thing? Is that calls related to people behaving badly during the holidays or is that fluctuation normal? There's about 45 additional calls, 46 additional calls from November. Why would that be?
Right, yeah, actually, December was a very slow month for us as far as incoming calls for service. But we've really increased our patrol checks, foot patrols on the boardwalks and things like that. So that may account for some of the difference.
So, so.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
So all in all, December was a very slow, very slow month for us.
Okay, so it might be the case then in in coming months that we'll see a similar number, which which reflects more frequent patrols, not more frequent bad behavior?
Yes, sir, yeah. I've mandated that every deputy per shift is to now do at least one foot patrol on one of the boardwalks. And, you know, weather permitting, so that so you'll probably continue to see that number about where it is now.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Charlie. Valerie?
No questions, just thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The North Beach Fire Department, we've seen the report. If we do have any questions, please field them to Larry and we'll try to get you an answer if he can. That will take us to the the Mayor's Report. Give me a second. Just one thing. Last Friday, Senator Mike Miller, the greatest advocate ever for Chesapeake Beach, was called home to rest. As our Senator for so many decades, Mike brought home the bacon to Chesapeake Beach. While he was a lion in Annapolis, here at the beach, he was Papa Bear. Every improvement in town had Mike's blessing and influence. The sidewalks on on Route 260 and 261, North Beach Fire Department improvements, Veterans Park, Kellums Field, Northeast Community Center, the Railway Trail, A-Front Boardwalk, the Beautiful Bridge, Support for Our Library and Elementary School. If not for Senator Mike Miller, most of us may not have even moved here to live as he gave us all these amenities for children and families to enjoy. Thank you, Senator. We love you. Rest in peace. Okay, thank you. At this time, we're going to vote on ordinance O dash 20 dash 11. An ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach amending the annual budget for the general fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of 19 to June 30 of 20 to reconcile expenses and income and ratify over expenditures. Is there a motion?
Second.
Any questions or comments from the council? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it, thank you. Vote on ordinance O dash 20 dash 12, an ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach amending the annual budget for the water reclamation treatment plant fund of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1, 19 to June 30 of 20 to reconcile expenses and income and ratify over expenditures. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve. Second.
Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Vote on the ordinance O dash 20 dash 13, an ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach amending the annual budget for the utility fund of the town of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of 19 to June 30 of 20 to reconcile expenses and income and ratify over expenditures. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? And lastly, a vote on ordinance O dash 20 dash 14, an ordinance of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach amending the annual budget for the water park fund of Chesapeake Beach for the fiscal year July 1 of 19 to June 30 of 20 to reconcile expenses and income and ratify over expenditures. Is there a motion?
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Okay, next we'll move to planning and zoning. Is Larry Brown on the call to to give an update?
Oh, yes, I'm on the phone.
Hey, Larry. You've raised your report. I'll ask, if you don't mind, I'll ask the council if they have any questions, okay? I'll start with Derek. Work my way around.
Hi, Larry, thanks for being here tonight. So could you just elaborate a little bit on the second page of your report? Where you you said in the days following the meeting, there was, I guess, a change in. Actually, I'll just let you, if you don't mind, if you could just elaborate on that, the part of of the report referring to the the days after the meeting.
Yeah, the during the meeting, the actually, the administrator's memo in preparation for meeting indicated that the the signed proposal for the Rodden Real was a minor issue. And we had not received anything about it. Actually, he he indicated to me that he would be receiving something new before or during the meeting. But after the meeting, or I should say during the meeting, I asked him if the proposals that were made for the Rodden Real were, met the code. And he said they did and then voted and approved the changes that were requested. Couple of days later, in a conversation with the zoning administrator, he told me that actually the signs, signs and flags proposal that Rodden Real had made did not meet the the code that's been approved by the Town Council. I I don't have the specific numbers with me, but as roughly, the sign was twice the size that the code would allow. And so I talked to the Town Attorney and so, you know, what do we do? Since, and the other question was, this looked to me like a variance and not a simple use approval. Since they were asking for a variance to the town code, which we don't do. So so the zoning administrator informed Rodden Real that we would be, the the commission would be looking at this again. And he was not going to issue the work permit.
Just pertaining to the sign and the flag?
Just to the sign and the flag, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that was really going to be the, my question is, have they been notified and have they acknowledged that that message in that position?
I'm told, I was told they were notified. I I don't know, I haven't gotten any feedback.
Okay. All right, thank you, Larry.
Keith?
Thank you, Mayor, yeah, I appreciate that. That was one of my questions. The other, I just wanted to confirm that at your January 27th meeting, you're going to be having a hearing on the issue of the short-term rentals? Is that correct?
That's correct. We've dedicated the entire meeting to that subject.
All right, thank you, thank you very much.
And Glenn?
Yeah, Larry, good evening, thanks for being live tonight. Again, I want to appreciate, I want to give you my thanks and appreciation for serving as the Chair. I know that's not an easy job sometimes. I have a follow-up question and it's certainly not my intent to put you on the spot, but reviewing the December minutes from the planning and zoning meeting, there was a note there that the that the commission was planning to address results of the referendum in coming months. I didn't recall discussing, I didn't recall any discussion regarding that. And I might have missed it for sure. You know, that just plays into my, just a general comment that I have about that approval. In the report of it, there was no mention of expanded gaming floor space. There was an apparent significant expansion of gaming floor space there. And so I'll be interested in seeing the discussion related to what's been approved last month and what your intentions are with examining these these referendums. Could you please elaborate just a little bit on what you had in the minutes from December regarding those those referendums?
Are you talking the December 2nd work session or the December 15th meeting?
The meeting where the expansion was approved.
Right. So I'm I'm a little confused on what referendum we were going to.
I need to be able to help out here. You know, Larry, I don't think, okay, Greg, I don't think it's, right now, it's anything to do with the the referendum that was held in November, okay? And we know the results. That's not in in planning and zoning's court, okay? The other stuff that you that you talked about, you know, the the Rodden Real and the extra space and all that, that isn't his court. But but the referendum part is not in his court. And but I will tell you, I had a conversation with with two two council people earlier. The, I plan to have something in the March 8th work session for the Town Council. And that is directly related to the 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 results of the referendum. So that is not in planning and zoning's court. And it and it, you know, it's going to be in our court and we're going to take it up in a work session on on March the 8th. But in terms of the other part that you were talking about, I don't know if Larry can can speak to that or not, but he he certainly can't speak to the referendum. I hope that helps Larry and I hope that helps Greg.
As, you know, as far as my questions this evening, I mean, that that's fine. I was just commenting on something that I had read in the minutes that from from last month, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm glad I was going to make that clear. Larry probably appreciates that as well. Charlie?
I'm happy to jump in, but I think Larry may be next.
That's okay, I have no additional questions, go ahead, Charlie.
I have a couple of questions. Larry, I'm going to just echo what other people have said here in terms of thanks, because I know that there's a lot of work on your plate right now and and I really appreciate that. So my questions are meant to, for informative, really just get information, not to in any way put you on the spot. The two questions I have, the first is just regarding the meeting in January and public comment. I just want to be sure, I I think this is an issue where we and council have heard quite a bit from the public about this. And I suspect we're not alone in that. And I just want to be sure that we do everything we can as as leaders to make sure we get as much public comment as possible. So this meeting is great to do that, but I hope there's other venues as well. And that we're really listening to what the public has to say about this, both in terms of not just a binary choice. We want short-term rentals or we don't, but some of the some of the subtleties about what that might look like if we allow it at all. So as much public comment as we can get. So, as much public comment as we can get is great, and I hope you guys do whatever you can to achieve that. But I'll shut up for a second if you want to comment, or just nod your head and say we are, that's fine, too.
Well, the intent is to dedicate the entire meeting to public comment. I imagine the commissioners will have some questions at the beginning to set the stage, if you will, to understand what the, where we're at right now, but then it's open for public comment.
Thank you.
Great. And then, the second question I had is just about the comprehensive plan. It's not mentioned here, I know it's not the intent of this agenda. Is there a way we could get any sort of a status of where you are with the comprehensive plan, or how that's going? And as I've said in some other meetings, I don't think you were present, you know, is there anything we can do to assist in helping with that? I suspect there's probably not, but I don't mean it to be a hollow offering. So, I'm just curious how that's going, and any feedback you have about that would be welcome.
Well, first part is, it's going slow. We have five draft chapters. I think there's like 10 or 12 that are required by law to be in the comprehensive plan. I did check with Maryland State officials a couple of weeks ago. Our update isn't due until, I think, 2023, so we have some time to meet the state's requirements for an update. But with the other things on the table, that will crowd the progress on the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Thank you, Larry. And lastly, Valerie?
Yes, Larry. First of all, I want to really thank you for this report. It's really appreciated, and thank you for your leadership on this committee. I know it's not easy all the time, to say the least. I did have one question that I've been getting from the public, and so I was hoping you could address it maybe, and that's the question on pole tab machines or slot machines. And the questions this that I've been getting, is the number of slot machines for establishment fixed, or may they be increased if the establishment wishes?
It's really, I'm not knowledgeable on this. My understanding is that the number of machines is fixed by the state, and the license they get from the state to operate a gaming facility, and that they could expand the floor space and the rod and reel 20 times, but the number of machines is fixed by their license. But that's my understanding. I don't have any direct knowledge that that's correct.
As a follow-up?
I can actually, if you'd like, I can actually, I'll tell you that Larry's information is accurate. It would take a state law to increase the number of the bingo slots, if you will, in town. So, it's fixed.
I just wanted to kind of like get that on the record, because that was my understanding also, is that it's fixed.
It's fixed.
And I said, I don't believe they can do that, but let me see. And so, thank you very much for that clarification, and Larry, once again, this report is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Larry. Next, Board of Appeals, there was no hearing. Chesapeake Beach Oyster Cultivation Society, I don't think John Bacon's on the call.
I'm on the phone.
Hey, John, I recognize your phone number. How you doing, buddy?
I'm on the phone. Do you hear me?
Yeah, yeah. Anything you want to share with us?
Yes, I do. There's a couple of interesting things going to happen in this new year. First off, the oysters are growing very well. We surveyed them recently, and they're doing a great job out there. Secondarily, we now have a oyster hatchery in Chesapeake Beach, which will allow Seabox to deposit oyster larvae into a large tank with oyster shells, and we will be able to create our own spat on shell. This will increase the number of oysters that we are putting in the bay by 100 or more percent, and that's pretty exciting for us. And that's all.
Well, that's great, John. We appreciate that, and thanks for calling in. We, you folks are going to notice on the agenda that you're going to see three new committees that the council is going to be going forth with this term. It's kind of exciting. I'm going to ask each council, each new committee head to, you know, say a few points about, you know, their goals, that sort of thing, and I'm going to begin with the Climate Change Advisory Group. Larry?
Yeah, thank you. Looking forward to working with this group. We're just, obviously, just starting at ground zero, and we'll be building up from there. But just a couple of updates to share with everyone. As everyone may have heard, the new presidential administration signed an executive order getting the United States back into the Paris Climate Accord. What that means is, the US will again begin to work with 190 parties and countries that are enrolled in that, in the mission to combat global climate change by reducing greenhouse gases. For our community here in Chesapeake Beach, right immediately adjacent to the bay, climate change is already having, we can see some impacts on our town with increased rainfall, higher temperatures, more localized flooding. So, we believe it's important that we continue to work aggressively. So, we're going to continue to monitor the progress and how our town can work to help limit climate change, and we'll be providing details as we go forward. Locally, we've, as you heard earlier in a comment that I made, we've started to look into implementing more solar energy opportunities in our town, and we're going to continue to work on that. And then, as you might have seen in Holly's Town Administrator's Report, Holly, Jay, and I have been participating in what's called Stormwater Solutions Work Group. That's hosted by the University of Maryland Environmental Finance Center. And after we complete the last session in early February, we're going to get together to discuss how our town can move forward with implementing some stormwater solutions, things like more detention of stormwater, forest pavement, possibly looking at more green trees in our town, things to, again, help offset the impacts of stormwater, not only in our town, but on the bay, and also to help mitigate some of the global climate change. With that, I'll ask co-chair, Marty, if he has any comments.
Thank you, Larry, for that introduction. I think you covered it really well. I just want to say, I'm really excited to be participating in this committee, looking forward to working on it and making progress in reducing our greenhouse gas emissions and doing our part to help stem climate change. I just, I do have one other fact. So, the Maryland greenhouse gas emissions reduction target, based upon their 2006 baseline, is a 40% reduction by 2030. So, you know, we have some, we can help contribute to that, and I agree totally with Larry in what he has said in terms of joining the Paris Climate Accord again, that now we have our federal government and the state government and our local government hopefully in alignment on this issue, and I think there'll be more funding that'll come forward for that, that hopefully we can take advantage of in the future here in the next few years. Anyway, thank you very much, Larry, for taking the lead on this. I do appreciate it. All right.
Thank you very much. And before I move on to the next item, I will say that, you know, in the last four years, both Larry and Keith taken advantage of opportunities that the state has offered for courses and, you know, and academy as it relates to climate change, so they are the perfect council people to be, you know, heading this up. So, thank you, gentlemen. Economic Development Committee, that'd be Larry.
Several updates on economic development. Our town continues to work with various county, state, and federal agencies to provide financial assistance to local businesses and residents during the pandemic. Town is in the process of reaching out on a local program for local restaurants to make sure they're aware of the Maryland Restaurant Relief Fund Grant. Under this program, small restaurants with one to seven full-time employees may be eligible for grants of $10,000, and larger restaurants with eight or more full-time employees may be eligible for grants of $15,000, and the grants don't need to be replayed. Thank you, Holly and Marty, for your help in reaching out to our local restaurants. Other economic development activities, planning for the new Twin Beaches Library is moving forward with construction hopefully beginning this fall. Economic Development Committee will work to see if we can get Library Director Carrie Wilson to maybe give an update to our council at some time in the future, and likewise planning for the new and expanded Beach Elementary Schools progressing. The target date for completion of that is 2023. If you haven't had a chance to see the plans, you really ought to look into it. It's fabulous what they are planning to do there. They're going to build an entirely new structure that's going to be located to, just to the west of the existing school, so that, obviously, school will continue while they're building the new structure, and they're integrating a lot of green infrastructure into the new plan as well. Upgrade of Route 261 between North Beach and the county line is moving forward. Estimated completion date for that project and reopening of the road, which is the most important part of it, is scheduled for this May. Hopefully, that comes to pass. And finally, some Twin Beaches news. Economic Development would like to congratulate Mr. Paul Troncombe as his election as Vice President of the North Beach Town Council. Co-chair, Mr. Morris, anything to add? Comment about the water tower branding at Richfield Station. It's, plays into economic development. I wanted to just bring the new information regarding the RAB, which, of course, is the Restoration Advisory Board. Thank you, Sharon and Larry. I'd like to mention the Delegate Fisher, has recently reached out to the representative to encourage them to move along. I've reached out to our elected, our elected co-chair, Kevin Britt. Larry and I may try to meet with him virtually or otherwise prior to the next RAB meeting. The Navy has not scheduled the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Next, Larry, a question, or ask the committee a question? Is now appropriate time to do that?
Go ahead.
I have a question regarding the library, and whether or not, and maybe it's premature, but whether or not economic development has put any thought into the fact that a very large piece of commercial property is going to be vacated when the library moves, or it's just premature to talk about that?
I don't think it's premature to talk about it. The straight answer is no, we have not. We're still waiting to see about the schedule for the completion. While they say they're going to start construction in May, the last meeting I sat in on for planning of it, they still seem to have a whole lot of issues to work on. I'm sorry, there's construction, remember, a whole lot of issues to work out yet, but that's a good point, Charlie. We should begin to think about what's going to happen there. Of course, that's a private building, Holland Building, so we would have to work with them a little bit to see what their plans are as well. Thank you. Can I bubble up on that, please? Yeah. Charlie, that is a good question. We have had our eye on that property for a while now, various reasons. I'm going to make it a point to reach out to Holly Howland. They own that building, and they manage that, and I'll report back to Larry, and we'll bring forth any new information that we can glean from that to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, while the green team is nothing new to the town, Vice President Bodine is going to report out on the green team forums on a monthly basis, which is exciting. So, Valerie, if you have a few words you want to say, that would be great. If not, that's fine.
Just that I'll be reaching out to the team via email, it's in a membership list that I got from Holly, and our goal will be to support the Sustainability Maryland Program, and so we look forward to some of those efforts.
Thank you. Next, we have another exciting one, that's exciting and new. Kellum's Revitalization Committee, Mr. Morris will chair this. Would you like to take the floor there, Greg?
Yeah, thank you. I'll be brief, and then I'll ask Charlie, see if he has any, anything to add. Kellum's Revitalization Committee, how does that sound to everybody? That's an exciting initiative there. May undergo a name change, but we're just getting started. We've actually been fielding some inquiries from others that are interested in joining the group. Forming an exploratory committee, way past and present future uses of Kellums, me and Charlie are going to be working to advance initiative. Nothing else to really report at this time, I don't think. Charlie?
I have nothing else to report, other than the acronym that I was working on was WKRP, the Working Revitalization Project. For those of us of an age, we would appreciate an acronym WKRP, but the name that you have probably better.
Don't drop turkeys at Thanksgiving.
I think the Cincinnati Town Council already has that one wrapped up.
It could be taken.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Twin Beach Opioid Abuse Awareness Coalition. Keith? I can't hear you. Anyone else hear him? Was it just me?
Yeah, no. Thank you. I was on mute. Appreciate it. Let me get my notes back up here in front of me. Yes, we held a meeting on January 14, 6:00 PM, and, you know, we continue to work on a couple of road signs in collaboration with Calvert County Health Department Behavioral Health Unit, so they provided us with some drafts. We've gone back and forth with them a bit. We're hoping in another month, we'll have those finalized, so we're kind of excited about that. Just extra information, one thing about those, so we've had Dr. Fuller come to Town Council this past session and talked to us a bit about their Recovery Rapid Response Unit and their Mobile Crisis Team, and give us an update. They are going through some rebranding here in Calvert County, so instead of Recovery Rapid Response, they're changing to Calvert Crisis Response, because the number that they have is going to start funneling all kind of crisis, whether it's, you know, mental health, everything except for what you would call 9114. They're going to kind of funnel through this number and website, so if you're having a marital crisis, or a mental health crisis, or a, you know, overdose crisis, you can call this number, and they'll cook you up to the correct resource, is how they're looking at that. So, those signs that we're working on will say Calvert Crisis Response instead of the Recovery Rapid Response. That's one little thing that has changed in our discussions as they firm up their plans at the Health Department. The Calvert Alliance Against Substance Abuse, they, one thing I wanted to share with folks is that they are looking for a student member from Calvert High School. If anybody has any connections there, they would prefer a 10th or 11th grade student to serve on their board, advisory board. And let's see, the Local Behavioral Health Administration, which is part of the Calvert County Health Department, has provided us with some information on an LGBTQ support group. We're going to be, I'm going to be sharing that with Holly, so we can put it up on our email blast. They're going to, they're also working to start a mental health support group for teens, and we'll be sharing that information as we get it. And a support group for folks in chronic pain in the county. You know, again, opioids were the treatment of choice for chronic pain for years and years and years, and that's how a lot of people got addicted to them. So, this is, you know, an alternative. There are alternative treatments out there, and this will be a support group to help some of those folks. And let's go on. What else did we have there? So, we're also working to distribute, will be... So we're also working to distribute, will be working to distribute Mobile Crisis Team Window Clings to the local businesses that hopefully they'll be putting in their, their windows to, to spread the information about the Calvert Crisis Response Unit and the Mobile Crisis Team. So everybody can see that. And I haven't seen them. I don't know how big they are. Maybe they're appropriate for a vehicle window. We'll find out. And if we have enough, happy to distribute those out. Then we're still talking about additional activities for 2021, and we'll share those. I'm also working on our 2020 Activity Report, and I hope to have that for the next meeting. I think we're about done on it. Our next Opioid Abuse Awareness Committee will, is scheduled for February 11th at 6:00 PM. It'll be virtual. I need to confirm that that date is free in the calendar and that we can do it. But if it is, it'll go out in the email blast. So with that, thank you very much. In that annual report, I'll have more statistics about what's going on in the county, as well as what's happened in the town and over, over the years and where we stand now. But I don't want to go into that now. And with that, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Keith. Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, one question for Keith. I apologize. I know we're, we're late in the meeting. Keith, I noticed just today that the, that the sign in the firehouse is, still has 2020 numbers on it. You have any idea when they're going to update that?
Usually, yeah. Normally, they would have taken that down. And I don't know if it's partly because of, you know, COVID is interfering with the normal work schedules or what. But normally, they would have taken that down and started back at zero by now, or they have, that's what they've done in the past. I believe that the Calvert Alliance Against Substance Abuse is kind of taking charge of that sign. So I'll check with them and see when they're going to update that. But yeah, I think it still says, what, 98 and 18 for 2020?
Something like that. I looked at it, and then I did a double take. And oh, yeah, they're still for 2020 or?
Yeah.
But anyway, not a big deal. I just noticed it. So I passed it on.
All right. Thank you.
Next, we have Walkable Community Advisory Group, Charlie Fink?
I know we've, we've been here a while. So, you know, we continue with a very strong team. I see Amend on the call. Nice to see you. Derek and I will, of course, both still be on the committee. I guess I'll be taking a more of a leadership role. And just a quick update on where we are. We're, we're still waiting for the final documents to come from RK&amp;K. This is the master plan that we commissioned them to do. They've really done a fantastic job, and we're very optimistic when we get these documents, that they'll, they'll provide the groundwork for a lot of our next steps. One of the things that we'll do is sort of a request, once our committee reviews it and really signs off on it, is a request back to the, to the Town Council to ratify it. I don't know if that's the right term, sort of approve it and, and pass a resolution that recognizes this plan. And we'll also make sure that it gets in the hands of planning and zoning, so that that can be integrated into the master comprehensive plan. And our next step after that, with some real solid resolution from the town and, and a path to having the information, the comprehensive plan, our, our next steps will be to be, to figure out what we can do that's tangible and break ground on, and how we begin to get grants and other funding. And I'm, I am cautiously optimistic that we will be able to see and point to some very tangible improvements in the town as a result of, of the work that we've done so far. So stay tuned for that. I'm hoping for a big year. Derek, you're welcome to tack on anything I missed.
No, excellent summary. It all, you know, all that kicks off when we get the report from RK&amp;K. So we're anxiously waiting that, and we really expect that anytime. So.
Kind of expected it by now. So.
As Charlie said, once, once we get that and we start moving forward, you know, we, we expect a lot of, a lot of progress to be made this year.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. No unfinished business, new business. Council to consider canceling the August 2021 Town Council meeting for a summer break. As everybody knows, the past two years, we've, we've done this to give, give the town staff and the mayor, quite frankly, a summer break. As we know, we can schedule a special meeting if, if the need arises anytime we want, and we will. We, we did discuss this in our, our work session. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second?
Any comments?
Comment.
Sir?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to explain to the public, this was discussed at the last work session, in the quality of life for staff and, and volunteer boards, besides the mayor, for things that were discussed. I think that time of year is the usual light work schedule. And there is a commitment to retaining, I believe it was retained for now, at least the work session for that month is still scheduled. And I'm in support of this. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no more comment, I'll, I'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post?
No.
And the ayes have it. Thank you, council. Next, council to consider a resolution R-21-1. The resolution of the Town Council Chesapeake Beach to establish December 3rd as Senate President Emeritus Thomas V. Mike Miller Jr. Day. I, I don't believe that, that Senator Jackson has had the time this evening to call in. I know, I'm going to read this in a second. I know most of us were on the street today, on the highway, when the, the procession of Senator Miller's in the coffin, in the hearse, you know, came up to 261. And he told me when it arrives at the State House, he, as, as Senator Miller's successor, he has some lying in state, you know, duties to attend to, which of course is obviously the most important thing he can do today. We will meet Senator Jackson later. He wants to attend one of our meetings. But let me get on with the resolution. Whereas, Thomas V. Mike Miller Jr. was born in Clinton, Maryland on December 3rd, 1942. Whereas, Thomas V. Mike Miller Jr. was the president of the Maryland Senate for 33 years. Whereas, Thomas V. Mike Miller Jr. was a member of the Maryland State Legislature for 50 years. Whereas, on September 21 of the year 2000, the mayor and town council proclaimed then, proclaimed then Senate President Thomas V. Mike Miller Jr. an honorary citizen of Chesapeake Beach. Whereas, Thomas V. Mike Miller Jr. was a longtime resident of Chesapeake Beach in Calvert County, Maryland. Whereas, Thomas V. Mike Miller Jr. was for many decades, the primary advocate and sponsor in the Maryland State Legislature for improvements and projects in the town of Chesapeake Beach. Whereas, Thomas V. Mike Miller was a true friend and colleague of the citizens of Chesapeake Beach. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, that December 3rd of every year shall be Senate President Emeritus Thomas V. Mike Miller Jr. Day in Chesapeake Beach. And it will be signed by the mayor and town council, Vice President, I'm, I'm sorry, Dr. Valerie Bodine, Vice President Derek Fabre, Charlie Fink, Larry Jaworski, Greg Morris, and Keith Partick. Is there a motion to approve?
So move?
Move to approve.
Second?
Okay. I'm going to let everybody have, have a comment if they choose. I'll, I'll start with the council vice president. Work our way around. Derek, if you care to have a comment, now's the time.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a fantastic idea, and I'm proud to be, have my name signed on this resolution to celebrate not only his, his birthday, but also as Senator Miller's Day in Chesapeake Beach moving forward. So I, I really am happy to be part of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith?
No, I appreciate you bringing this forward, and, and thank you again.
Very good. Mr. Morris, the maker of the motion?
Yes. I had some comments prepared for lightning round, but this is definitely a more appropriate place for them, if, if, if everyone would bear with me. Senator Miller's, I've been in town, I've lived in town for 23 years, and Senator Miller has been part of the fabric of this town. From early town Easter festivities, numerous dedications to talking politics and growth at various encounters. It's been an honor to be acquaintances with Senator Miller. And by no means, I don't want to give the impression that I knew him really well. But I was one of fortunate, I was fortunate to be able to cross paths with him on many different occasions and briefly talk things, diverse junctures over the years, private and political. The conversations were brief, but sometimes potent, on various topics. The experience and wisdom of this man will be sorely missed. And it's going to be hard not having him around or available for conference. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Greg. Larry?
Wanted to echo the comments, previous members, and just say what a fortunate timing, I think it is, that we're acting on this resolution tonight, when we all were just outside watching his procession go by. So, thank you.
Charlie?
Yeah, thank you for taking the lead on this. Obviously, we'll, we'll miss, hopefully we will not point back to tangible things that we lost out on, but we will, he will be missed. So thank you for doing this.
You're welcome, sir. And Dr. Bodine?
Yeah, Mike Miller will be missed by our state, specifically this town, his town. God bless you, Mike. It was wonderful to know you, and this is a fitting tribute.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Thank you, council. At this point in time, we'll see if, we'll ask if there's any, any public comment from the, the folks on the call. If, if there is, let us know. Hearing none, I'll move on to the council lightning round. I'll, I'll begin with Dr. Bodine and work my way around.
Yeah, just something like the three words, "Thank you, Mike."
Charlie?
I got a very exciting email from our wonderful library system to pre-register for my COVID vaccine. I was, I was hoping I would get a date. Then I was scared I would get a date of like May 2022. Turns out, if you register, you don't get a date, but you do get your name on a list. I suspect I'm a third on the list of people who registered, because I clicked submit on at about 10:01, because it opened at 10:00. So I'm very anxious to get vaccinated. I hope it is as soon as possible, and I hope and, and encourage everyone to get vaccinated as soon as they are eligible. And that's going to be a major step in the light at the end of this COVID tunnel. Thank you.
Thank you. And I share your sentiments. Larry?
Yeah, I want to echo the sentiments, and I'm very pleased with the initiatives that are being put forward by the new administration to strengthen precautions against COVID. One of the very, very, very fortunate aspects of being a member of the Fire Department is not only have I received the first shot, I'm actually scheduled to receive my second shot this Wednesday. So as a first responder, that's a great thing. And then on a totally unrelated manner, my calendar recollection is getting fuzzy with my age, but if I'm right, I think we're celebrating four years of our town administrator being with us right about now. Is that correct?
Whoa, how do you know? To the history, Larry.
Yeah. Congratulations, Holly. Thank you for being with us. You've done so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Indeed. Yeah, thank you, Holly. Okay. Is that it, Larry? Okay. Councilman, Councilman Morris?
Yeah. Rest in peace, Senator Miller. May your wisdom fill our minds and breaths in the years to come. Everybody mask up, get, get vaccinated and stay safe.
Thank you, sir. Keith?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I, I, I will echo that. I was going to say, yeah, keep wearing your masks. I'm looking forward to getting my shot. I know it's going to be a while. My parents have gotten their first one, so I'm excited about that. But they're in Indiana, and, you know, but we all got to keep practicing our social distance and masks and take care. You all have a great evening.
Thanks, Keith. And Vice President Fabre?
Yes, there's a couple of things. So I, too, signed up for the registry, Charlie. I think I did it about 10:20, as it turned out, and.
So I better get vaccinated before you.
Well, I think I'm in the third tier, so I'm, I'm pretty sure I might be June of 2022. But you'll, you'll be before me, I'm sure. But I, I do also recommend everyone to take advantage of that. Get on the registry and, and, you know, wait for your notification. My other comment earlier this week, Maryland Municipal League released information on its 2021 Quote If I Were a Mayor I Would essay contest. The, the goal of that is to educate Maryland's fourth graders on how municipal government works and the role of the mayor, you know, in, in the municipality. Their theme this year is teamwork through flexibility, respect, leadership, and civility. And so if, if you tuned into our work session, you, you heard us talk about an initiative that we're, this administration is going to take and try to generate enthusiasm and excitement of our, our youth in municipal government. And so this is a great way to kick that off for, for that initiative. So with the help of the town administrator and, and the town clerk, we're going to reach out to our local teachers. The, the way they're doing the contest this year is, it's, of course, electronic. They're setting up regional drop boxes, which requires a teacher to submit an entry form and be the conduit to submitting those essays. So we are going to look for fourth grade teachers and also share this notice with, with the public in general. Look for, and encourage our fourth graders to take part in this contest with MML. And again, we've, we've had some success in the past with, with some of our very educated and intelligent youth, and we want to encourage more of that this year. So again, as part of that initiative to, with our student and council efforts, we're, we're going to take this on. The deadline for submittal is the end of March, so we'll provide some updates on that as we move forward. And again, along with everyone else, I just want to say rest in peace, Senator Miller. We will miss you, but you, we will not be forgotten. And your, your name, your name is all over this town, and, and we will continue to honor you. So thank you for everything.
Thank you, Derek. R.I.P., Mike. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you.
Night, everybody. Go Chiefs!
Good night.